I'd like to call to order this meeting of the PBD City Council. Please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Channel 9, is being taped by PBD Access TV, and is also being recorded by our City Council stenographer. Reports of committees. Counselor Garabedian, Municipal Safety.
Be quick, huh? Cut me off there in there for a second. Okay, Municipal Safety meeting met, Committee met tonight. We discussed several items. One was electronic signs by Counselor Walsh. And to purchase six to maybe 12 signs we're talking about. So a motion to request meeting with Captain Richards and Chief Griffin considering these signs and how to purchase them was a motion. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
Okay. The next one on the agenda was the, a stop line between Summit Street and Centennial Drive by Counselor Charis. And again, that one was a motion to Captain Richards to determine the best way to place a stop line, a way to place a stop line. So moved.
On the motion, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make one correction to the original motion. So if you look at your packets, it just worded the wrong way. The original motion says the intersection of Centennial Drive and Summit Street where drivers coming up Summit taking a left onto Centennial. And that's wrong, correct? So the actual motion should read coming off Centennial and taking a left onto Summit. So if we could just get a correction on that original motion.
Yeah, I think it's six, half dozen. Depending on when you're coming, the line will be going across Centennial.
Right. But...
The line will be going off...
It would have to be at the end of Centennial Drive because you couldn't put a stop in the middle of Summit Street.
Right.
So we'll change that.
Counselors, you heard the motion as amended by Counselor Turco. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Garabedian.
Just one other thing, because both of these motions have some good substance behind it, I think we should get a subcommittee meeting for November if we can. Squeeze one in and see if we can get Captain Richards here.
We will make every effort to. It may squeak into December, but it'll happen this year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And you had a third item, Counselor Garabedian?
The third item was, let's see. We spoke, was it Counsel Charis that spoke on? I think it wasn't on the agenda, we just had kind of an open mic on it. Let's see. Where were we?
Item C was the traffic light, which I think is staying in Subcommittee. Is that right?
Right.
So that's a report of progress.
Thank you.
And the last item that was brought up is also a report of progress was the new legislation on the 20 miles per hour, right?
Right, yeah. I'm sorry. The traffic light was put into, to, put back into Subcommittee. And Counselor Charis wants to make sure that we abide by the new state laws that are coming out that will let us kind of direct where we want to go with speed limits. Just follow the process of it. Counselor Charis?
Just pointing information. House Bill 4565.
Counselor Charis.
I take direction from everyone. House Bill 4565, reference.
Reference to?
Thank you, Counselor Charis. And thank you, Counselor Garabedian, for that report of progress. Finance Committee, Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Counsel President. The Finance Committee met this evening. Sitting in for the Committee were myself as Chair, Counsel Gould, Counsel Saslaw, Counselor Walsh. And substituting for Counselor Manning Martin was Counselor McGinn. Also present at the meeting were Counsel Mazzulis and Counselor Turco and Counselor The meeting contained three items. The first item was a presentation by the Mayor on a proposed ordinance amendment of Division VII for the Building Department. Really to summarize, that was to move the Building Department out of the Community Development Department and put it under a direct report to the Mayor. There was some discussion and clarification that went on, but the end result was that a vote was taken to unanimously support the request of the Mayor for this change, which would say that be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD. As follows, Section 1, there's hereby established a Building Department. Section 2, the Building Department shall manage, plan, organize, direct, control, and exercise all the powers and duties conferred by the Mass General Law, applicable ordinances, and special acts of the Legislature upon building commissioners and local inspectors in all aspects of city construction permitting for all trades and administration and enforcement of the State Building Code and the PBD zoning ordinances. And the Code of the City of PBD is adopted on January 19, 1986, and amended, is hereby further amended by inserting a new Section 2-84 establishing the Building Commissioner So Section 284 establishes that, and the position of Building Commissioners hereby created and established. Section 284 subsection A, same appointment term, the Building Commissioners shall be appointed by the Mayor, subject to confirmation by the City Council for a term of one year to commence January 1 and to expire December 31 or until a qualified successor is appointed and confirmed. Section 284B, which is new, same as qualification, duties require the Building Commissioner to comply with Mass General Law C-143, Paragraph 3, and the Regulations Promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety Board of Building Regulations and Standards. Section 284C, same as duties, under the direction of the Mayor, the Building Commissioners shall manage, plan, organize staff, direct coordinate and budget all activities of the Building Department. Duties include preparing annual budgets, developing strategic and long-term plans, project oversight, maintaining administration, enforcement, and compliance with the Mass General Law, State Building Code, PBD zoning ordinance, and any applicable special acts of the Legislature. The Building Commissioners shall supervise all local inspectors, municipal code enforcement inspectors, excluding sanitary code and housing code inspectors, building inspectors, plumbing inspectors, wire inspectors, sealers of weights and measures, and other staff, all of whom shall be under the direction and control of the Building Commissioner. Section 3, there was a deletion of language, and now I will depend on Counselor McGinn, who modified the language at the Subcommittee level.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. And the clerk has those modifications, so if you want to make that adjustment. Tim?
Yeah, it's under, under Section 3 in the ordinance. It cited Section 10-31, that should be Section 10-32. And we're going to be striking all references to do with municipal code enforcement inspectors, building inspectors, plumbing inspectors, wire inspectors, and sealer and weights of measures in Sections A, B, and D under 1032.
In Section 4, all ordinance or parts of ordinances inconsistent here with are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. And the motion would be to advertise it, correct? Tim? To advertise. So moved.
Counselors, you heard the motion. On the motion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Counselor Gravel.
Thank you. The second item that was discussed was the schedule of compensation for full-time positions not subject to collective bargaining. Specifically, two positions were discussed, the City Building Inspector and the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry. During the discussion, the Mayor presented competitive salary analysis, which was compared by, which was prepared by the Human Resources Department. And his recommendation was to change each position's compensation from their current level to $99,634, which is consistent with other department heads within the city, thereby creating parity between the departments. After some discussion, it was, it was approved by the Subcommittee with an amendment to the language of the approval. So the amendment would be as follows. In an ordinance amending Section 1821 entitled "Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining," be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows. Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation classification plan is hereby amended as follows. The Code of the City of PBD is adopted on January 23, 1969, and amended, is hereby further amended by deleting from 1821 the ordinance establishing a compensation classification plan for Building Inspector, Director of Parks, and Forestry. The request is, and substituting the following, and I would just ask, in the interruption of this moment for a second, should the term "Building Inspector" be changed to "Building Commissioner" at this point in time? So the request would be, and substitute therefore the following, Building Inspector, effective 10/27/2017, a compensation rate of $99,634, subsequently to be increased by 2%, consistent with other department heads, to an amount of $101,626 effective on 1 July 17. Director of Parks and Recreation, Forestry, again, effective 10/27/16, to be changed to $99,634. And subsequent, consistent with all other department heads and members of the ordinance, a 2% increase to $101,626 effective 1 July 17. And there will be no retroactive payments. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. Just to clarify, because you asked the question about Building Commissioner versus Inspector, and then you said Inspector again. Did you mean Commissioner?
I meant Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. On the motion, Counsel Saslaw.
Thank you. Being a ward counselor, I depend immensely on the Building Commissioner. I get calls very often from neighbors, budding businesses, or businesses who have questions about storage of materials, what their neighbor's doing, if it's legal, not illegal. And I have to say that that office has been just fabulous in getting back to me, getting the information I need, going out and seeing what's happened in the community, and just solving problems that, as a ward counselor, I get on a daily basis. In addition, you know, I take, my family takes full advantage of the programs that the Park and Rec Department have up at Brooksby Farm and other youth sports programs in the city. And so for me, I have, I have no issues with the positions, with the people in the positions. For me, what this came down to was the fact of some of the discussion, the terms "fair" and "competitive" were used. And I just, in my good conscience, couldn't approve what basically becomes a 25% pay raise in a matter of eight months. And so that's the reason why I can't support it. I won't support it. Do I believe they need, that they're entitled to a raise? Absolutely, I do. I do. But in this day and age, to go back and to face my constituents and to say, "I approve the 25% pay raise." I don't know many people are getting those pay raises these days. Do I believe that they do a phenomenal job? I do. Do I believe we're fair and competitive? Maybe a little bit of a bump. I could see that. But as I said, in good conscience, I could not support a 25% pay raise. And that's the reason why I'll be voting the way I vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Saslaw. Counselor Gravel.
And I certainly respect the good counselor's opinion, which it is. It's an opinion, and we're all entitled to one. My experience in the world of business has been that when something's wrong, you've got to make it right. When something's not fair, you've got to make it fair. If something's not competitive, you've got to protect yourself in your investments. And so, while I respect everything that he has to say in that regard, and that's his opinion, my opinion is when something is totally out of whack, you've got to bring it to where it's got to be. And I'm not really concerned, you know, I have to go out and get votes too across the city. And I'm not afraid to tell anyone of my constituents why I voted in support of this, because I believe, I, like anybody else, am required to do what I believe is right, and I think this is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Counsel Gravel. Counselor Saslaw.
I respect my fellow counsel's opinion also, but I do not believe that we are totally out of whack. And to characterize it like that, I don't think is, you know, I just don't see it as totally out of whack. As I said, maybe a double-digit salary increase possibly, but just for the record, I don't think it's totally out of whack. I respect your opinion, Counsel, and I appreciate your respecting mine.
No, and I certainly respect it, but I'll hold my opinion that I think it's out of whack. That's my opinion.
So we have a motion to advertise as amended and read by Counsel Gravel. Roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
No.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Counselor Gravel.
And then we had, our third item on the agenda for the evening was, pertains to the Retirement Board. This was an item that had been brought up in a prior meeting. And I think information was given to us this evening that we're looking for a ability to change the stipend currently paid to the Retirement Board, based on the immense amount of increased duties that they've realized with all of the attendance that they have to do for state issues, et cetera. And augmented by the fact that in 20 years, there's been no increase to the stipend that they're currently being paid. The request was to increase the stipend by, I thought it was $1,200. By $1,200 per year. And that would be, it was requested to be, so that was voted on and approved in Subcommittee, but it was requested subsequent to that vote, that consideration be given to make that effective, that particular stipend effective July 1 of 16. So that will be the motion, is to approve the stipend increase effective July 1, 2016, in the amount of $1,200 on the existing stipend. So moved.
On the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
No.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
And that was it for this evening. Thank you, Counsel Gravel.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
If there's no objection, can we go back to his previous, not this past, but the other one? Can I move reconsideration on that, or is it too late? Just so that, hopefully the same does not prevail.
You are able to move reconsideration.
All right, then I would move reconsideration on the...
Which, which motion?
On the, his middle motion on the compensation of the Building Commissioner and the Parks Director. So move reconsideration, hoping the same shall not prevail.
Counselors, you heard the motion for reconsideration. Roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
No.
Walsh.
No.
Charis.
No.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
No.
Gravel.
No.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
We also this evening had a meeting of the Committee on Drug Education and Awareness. Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you. We had, present tonight were members Charis, Counsel Charis, and sitting in for Counselor Manning Martin was Counselor Turco. We had Lisa and Todd Buckley come down and make a presentation and inform us a little more about the 30th Annual Colton Buckley 5K Road Race, and some of the things that they're doing in the community, as far as pamentering and helping families who don't have funds to seek assistance for any type of addiction for their loved ones who are battling addiction. They filled us in on that, and the road race, for the public, anyone who'd like to attend, it's going to be on Sunday, November 13, at 10 o'clock, kicking off from the AOH. And it's a 5K road race. And that, once again, we then had a motion on the floor from Counselor Turco to make a donation to the Colton Buckley Foundation of $1,000, coming from the Council on Drug Education account. And that passed the vote of 3-0. And that was the only business before us this evening.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Saslaw on a $1,000 donation from said fund, where this is financial. I'm going to request a roll call vote. Roll call.
Counselors Mazzulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
I'll say Counsel Sas, thank you, Counsel Saslaw. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor...
Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question to Counselor Saslaw on that?
Sure.
Thank you, through the Chair. This fund, you're talking about the Drug Education Fund, how does that get funded? And the money, where does it come from to allocate funds to that? Do you know?
So through the President. It's my understanding, this fund was actually established before I got on the Council. I believe that there was a golf tournament every year. That hasn't happened for a few years now. And I think that's something that, as a Council, we might want to look at, to get the funds back up in the bank account a little bit. So that was mentioned during the Subcommittee this evening. I think that's something that we're going to look into as far as raising some funds going forward, because at this point, there are no endeavors taking place. But I do believe that there is a, you know, there's a wish to increase the funds back into that fund.
Counselor Charis.
To the Chair. Would there be a way that we were able to use a, perhaps 1% of the tax from cigarettes, cigars, and alcohol into the city to be funding directly into this? Is there a resource of...
Who are you directing that question to?
I guess I would say you, sir, at this point, unless Counsel Saslaw has an answer to that. So, or any other members of the Council.
Yeah, I don't, I would probably defer to the Chairman of Finance on that. That's a taxation issue, and those particular categories of tax, I don't know that there's a way to earmark that locally.
You know, in the past, we've allocated certain taxes for certain things, but it was more a commitment from the Mayor. It wasn't that you could, ordinate by ordinance, push the money. So for instance, when we raised the meals tax, we had a commitment from Mayor Von Fanny to direct a portion of the raise, of the difference between what it was and what it would be, to sidewalks and sidewalk repair. But that is not a, it's not an ordinance, it's not a requirement, it's just a commitment from the executive authority of the Mayor. So I mean, if there was a desire to do that in, from a, from a local, you know, receipts perspective, then the Mayor could present it and ask to have it moved in.
Counselor Saslaw.
I like your thinking, Counsel Charis. I'm not a, I'm not a big golf tournament guy myself, but the other thing that crossed my mind is that the Board of Health, they have, they do enforcement on various licenses, whether it be beer and alcohol, tobacco. And I don't know the answer, but I'd be curious, when they, when they find a establishment for selling cigarettes to undermined, underage, where those funds go? Because maybe that could be a possible, possible resource of revenue for this fund. So seeking some guidance from my fellow counselors. Any suggestions on how we go about and maybe find out what they do with those fines that come in?
And you might make a motion to request that information from the Director of the Health Department, or the Board of Health, perhaps. Or the Finance Director, would may. Counsel Walsh?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just would caution everybody here, that when you're talking about raising revenue or fines through our taxpayers, and then donating that money to a charity, there might be some issues. So that money that's in that account was privately raised, is my understanding, through golf tournaments or whatnot. So I think we may, we may have a conflict if we, if we're looking to raise revenue and then donating it to private charities.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Gravel.
I think the good Counsel brings up a great point, because if I heard right tonight, the Buckley's established a 501(c)(3), and state law forbids a municipality from donating municipally-raised tax funds to a 501(c)(3) directly. The reason we can do it through this is because those monies were raised privately, so they're not a part of a tax. So it would be, I think we'd be walking a little bit of a line there in terms of, based on what they are now established as, which is a charitable organization.
Counselor Charis.
See, I knew my good counselors here would have the answer to my question. Thank you.
Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, there's, there's all kinds of ways to raise money, even if it's a small amount, but there's now 40, was $4,400 in that, Counselor Saslaw?
Correct. Before the $1,000 donation this evening.
We donated 1,000 of that, so, you know, let's see if you are willing, Counselor, since it's your committee, why don't we take a look at raising some funds? You know, I think Mayor Bentoncourt was instrumental in doing a golf tournament for that particular fund, so maybe we can pull something together there. But I don't, I don't want it to make it look like we're pushing the can down the road, but let's, let's spend that money. It's, you know, let's spend the money. It's $3,400. Let's, I don't know why we didn't do more, but next year, let's see if we can do more. Still, we can give, for the next couple of years, we can give $1,500, and see what we
Thank you, Councilors. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Council Mitsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not a motion, it's just a point of information for the people in my ward that live on Mount Vernon Street. Every year, the mayor gives us a list that we make out, the roads that we want repaired, and he usually gives us what we want. He's always done that for Ward Three, and he's been very generous. And this year here, we were supposed to do Mount Vernon Street, and we were told that it was going to be done before the winter started. Well, there's been a little issue here, and I spoke to the mayor earlier this evening, he approached me and said, "There's a letter going out to the people on Mount Vernon Street next week explaining what the delay is," and that he reassured me that that will be one of the first projects that will be started in the spring of 2017. And I'm glad he approached me today, because people have been asking me about it, and I have had no explanation, but the letter that's going out to them will explain exactly what's going on, and I'm sure they'll be very happy with it. I want to thank the mayor for approaching me and going through, getting a letter out to the people in that street. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's no motion there, right? Thank you, Council Mitsoulis. Any further motions?
Okay, I do have a motion. The other day, one of my constituents came to my shop to see me, and she was all in tears. She got a ticket for parking near a handicap spot, and I felt very bad for her, I really didn't know what to do, but the ticket's a $150 ticket, and she was a young girl, and she was really upset with it. And when I did the research on the handicap spot, which is at number 27 Fulton Street, the person who that spot was assigned to passed away about five years ago, so there's nobody using that spot. It's just an empty spot, so my motion, Tim, is please have 27 Fulton Street, the handicap spot, the handicap sign removed ASAP, as soon as possible. And I told the girl who got the ticket to appeal it, not pay it, appeal it, because I think that she needed a break here. So if we could get that signed down before she goes to the clerk magistrate and say, "That sign is no longer there." She should have never got a ticket anyway, so that's my motion. Let's get rid of the sign.
Do you want to make a motion to also rescind the ordinance?
I'd make a motion also to rescind the ordinance for the sign, yes.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Mitsoulis.
Yeah, one more, Mr. Chairman. A couple of weeks ago, there was a vehicle coming out of Tremont Street that went in, and I'm sure you all saw it in the paper, went into the home on 56 Central Street, and it did quite a bit of damage to the home. And the owner of the property called me up and asked me if I could get a guide rail put in front of his home. So that's my motion, the guide rail for 56 Central Street. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Mitsoulis.
Under suspension of the rules, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go item 8A.
And receive, approve, all papers being in order?
Yeah, motion to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Mitsoulis.
Thank you.
Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of motions. The first is under suspension of the rules to receive item 7A, which is a memorandum from His Honor the Mayor, and this is regarding the request for additional liquor licenses.
Councilors, you heard the motion, receive. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Okay, and if there's no objection, Mr. President, I would move to approve his recommendation. It's a request for 20 additional all-alcohol licenses. Section 12 of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, the licenses to be sought via home rule petition would be assigned as follows. Ten licenses assigned to the downtown Peabody region, using Foster Street, Main Street, Howley Street, Walnut Street, Washington Street, Railroad Avenue, and Central Street as the borders and encompassing all properties therein. Seven licenses shall be assigned to the Route 1 and Route 114 corridors, which shall include all parcels on and immediately bordering Route 1 and Route 114. And three licenses shall be assigned to the Centennial Park area to include Centennial Drive, Corporation Way, Technology Drive, Summit Street, First Avenue, and Second Avenue. So moved.
Council Walsh, would you read the balance of that, too? Because I think that comes into play.
Sure, Mr. President. In all cases, licenses shall only be assigned to parcels as allowed by the zoning ordinance table of uses. To prohibit these licenses from being transferred, legislation will include the following language. A license granted under this act, if canceled, revoked, or no longer in use, shall be returned physically with all the legal rights, privileges, and restrictions pertaining thereto to the licensing authority of the City of Peabody. The licensing authority may then grant the license to a new applicant within the areas designated herein under the same conditions as specified in this act. So moved.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Councilors, you heard the motion? Roll call. On the motion, Council Garabedian.
Right, I just want a question on that. So that's getting a liquor license from the city and giving it back to the city when they're done. Is there a term, a limit on how long they can be in business for with that license?
I believe it's a minimum of three years, but we're assigning them to the area. If you want to add language, we can do that.
All I'm thinking is, if somebody's going to keep the license, if they're in business for 20 years, it doesn't do the city much good, because it doesn't get to transfer that again over all the years. You give it to them once for 2,500 or whatever the value is. I'm also thinking, and I'm not sure if you can even do this, that stipulation, if they had it for so long, and they were going to sell it, they want to sell the business, that the city got half the profit of the sale on the license.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Walsh.
Through you, to Council Garabedian, these licenses cannot be sold at all. They have to revert to the city.
Then I guess the question would be then, I mean, you say like three-year minimum they have to have it for?
Well, they don't, if they don't survive, not necessarily, but, you know, the idea is that they would have it for several years. I mean, likely, you want a business that's going to be there for a considerable amount of time, but it will revert to the city.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Council Gravel?
Yeah, I'm thrilled that these are being returned. This is much long-needed language. I mean, these should not become property. They're actually licensing that the city is giving to help support its economic environment. So to me, this is just great, that this language, and I also like the fact that we've set boundaries for where the licenses can be issued, but we haven't set, you know, specific locations, which is perfect. Under the, even the current licenses that are out there, just for clarification to Council Garabedian, the licensing board has the ability to withdraw the license if there's no activity on the license, no sales on the license, after a designated period of time. And usually, they'll issue notice, and if they haven't sold it by then, then they'll pull the license back. So that's prompted a lot of licenses to be sold in the past. So I don't think you have to worry too much about if you issue it, they sit on it, if there's no activity on it, the licensing board has the ability to pull the license and take it right back into the pool, whether it's one of these or one of our existing ones.
Thank you, Council Gravel. Council Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just one additional item that we probably should include in this, just to make sure, is when we reported out of committee last week, or two weeks ago, part of that motion was to correct one of the licenses that already is assigned to downtown. It was the 86-88 Main Street license, and that was going to be assigned to the two Main Street address, and that license is not one of the requested 20. That is really modifying the licenses that were approved several years ago. So I'd just like to make sure that's included in this motion.
Just for clarification, Council Walsh, so that, as I recall, that language was accepted and already approved, subject to this additional language, right? So we're augmenting language that was already approved, that I think contained that modification that you're drawing our attention to.
That's correct.
Thank you. Council Charis, would you?
I did, to the Chair. I just want to make sure, what we're saying is that the business would not be able to be sold and carry over that liquor license.
The license can't be sold. The license, the business is really not our...
So if the business is sold, they can, that license will go with the new owner?
Not necessarily. Council Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Council Charis. What it would do is, it would revert back to the city, and then the licensing board would have to reissue that. So the new owner of the business would then have to apply for that license, but it doesn't automatically go with the property as opposed to the existing five that we have for downtown. Those are assigned specifically to an address, whereas these would be assigned to an area, and then if a business either closes or moves, then they would have to go before the licensing board.
If I may?
Council Chair?
And if there is, you know, if there's still licenses on the table, it wouldn't be a problem, but if there was people in line waiting for a license, a business who, say a restaurant, who sells their business, the potential buyer would not necessarily be able to have a restaurant that they would be buying that would have a full liquor license, correct? So the value of that restaurant would diminish quite a bit, and the other fold over cautious of, if there was two partners in that business, and one partner buys out the other partner, does this happen the same?
Yeah, I think the point, I'm going to defer to Council Gravel, but I think the point is it never becomes an asset of the business in the first place, so it's not something that gets divvied up as a part of the sale, but I'll let Council Gravel comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is that it is exactly that. It never becomes an asset of the business, so therefore, in the contemplation of the sale, it's never considered the value that it currently is considered. And just so you know, even under the existing liquor licenses, while they've been traded like trading cards, they still require a transfer approval of the liquor licensing board. So technically, the liquor licensing board, if it ever had wanted to intervene in the transfer of a license, it could have, because it could have said, "No, you can't transfer that license."
I like...
Council Charis.
Thank you. I like the idea that it doesn't, that people aren't selling their licenses to make a profit and not turn it back in the city. I understand that. What I'm worried about, if that established restaurants now, when they bought and established their business, had the understanding that perhaps they were going to sell, you know, sell that business with the liquor license. Now, I don't approve of people selling just a liquor license and hanging on to their business, but I am concerned that somebody who works 20 years, builds up their mom-and-pop restaurant, who has a full liquor license, is now can't sell the business either to a relative or somebody else and not get that. Let's face it, restaurant is nothing without a liquor license. That's all. That's concern.
Council Walsh, and Council Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so we're clear, we're talking about a request for 20 additional licenses for the City of Peabody assigned to certain regions. Those licenses are the licenses that would revert back to the city. If a current restaurant owner who purchased a license is in business for 20 years or whatever and owns that license, again, through subject of the licensing board approving, they may sell it. That has, the, people who have licenses now may have used them as collateral in their loans for the restaurant or whatever. They are not impacted by this, other than, let's be honest, by adding additional licenses to the City of Peabody, we are probably diminishing the value of current licenses out there. We should be aware of that. So I think what you're concerned about has nothing to do specifically with this.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Council Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question, I guess through you to Council Walsh. You said it's $2,500 for the liquor license, correct? I'm sorry, maybe I have it wrong. So what's the cost of the liquor license?
Do you have that information? No, I...
I don't have it with me.
His Honor the Mayor happens to be sitting here and has that off the top of his head, I believe.
Currently, Council Turco and other members, to purchase, to obtain a liquor license, an all-alcohol license, and a beer and wine license from the City of Peabody is $2,250 a year.
Okay, that was my next question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. So it's a yearly fee that, for these licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything else, Council Turco? Other councilors? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Move reconsideration, hope it will prevail. Councilors, you heard the motion by Council Gravel for reconsideration, hopes the same shall not prevail. Roll call.
Councilors Mitsoulis. Walsh.
No.
Charis.
No.
Sasla.
No.
Turco.
No.
Gravel.
No.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Okay. Gould.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Motion fails, eight to one, two abs.
Council Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple other quick motions. Since Council Garabedian is scheduling a meeting for November of the Municipal Safety Committee, I would like to refer the issue of the responsibilities of towing companies when clearing accident scenes. And on that motion, Mr. President, I've noticed every once in a while, when there is a car accident somewhere in the city, and the vehicles are towed, that a lot of car parts are left behind. And, you know, I've noticed it, but this past week, there was an incident on Washington Street, where it ended up that the entire skin of the bumper was left behind. And I'm just trying to figure out, if we're calling a tow company, and it's part of the vehicle, why it is not going with it? Because it was really, I thought, a little bit of a hazard when you have a lot of middle schoolers walking to school, and there's debris still on the side of the roadway and on the sidewalk. So I just want to know if that's part of their responsibility. So I'd like that to be referred to committee. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would request that the finance director update the city council regarding the first quarter revenues for the City of Peabody, and alert us to any potential revenue shortfalls or unusual spending challenges. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Vote. Council Walsh?
One last motion, Mr. President, and that would be to request the superintendent of Schools to provide the council with data relative to the number of students enrolled in our school system from any apartment complexes throughout the city with more than 10 units. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Council Charis?
Thank you, Chairman. No motions, but I just want to put a bit of information out to the residents of Peabody. This weekend, you do not need to go to Salem for a night of entertainment this Saturday night. You can go to the Knights of Columbus for a nice dinner, Polish dinner, then go right across the street for a pop-up pub for some drinks. So again, you don't need to leave the city, just head on down to the Knights of Columbus for a nice Polish dinner in the pub right across the street. That's all.
Thank you, Council Charis. Council Saslaw?
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8F.
And schedule a public hearing? Councilors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sassla.
Yes, and motion to receive late communication for an application from the Salem Country Club.
And schedule a public hearing?
Schedule a public hearing.
Counselors, we're just going to take, the first is a vote to accept the late communication. All in favor? Any opposed? A vote. And then it's to set up the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? On the motion, Counsel Gould.
I want to take a moment to commend Counsel Gravell for an extremely diligent job on putting this special per, and Tim, excuse me, Tim and his staff, on putting this special permit together. There's so much detail in it. Nice job, Counsel Gravell. Thank you.
So the motion is to schedule a hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Sassla.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sassla. Counsel Turco.
Mr. President, I just have one motion tonight. Thank you, and I guess I'm going to refer this to the Municipal Safety meeting in November also, and that would be to make the stop currently located at Granite Road and Fairview Ave., on Granite Crossing, Fairview, a four-way stop sign coming from Fairview, as Fairview's become a cut-through road.
To make it a four-way stop. Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Just a clarification, because there's been repeated mention of this meeting in November, it may end up in December, okay? And I think that was it. Counsel Turco?
That's all. Thank you.
Counsel Gravell.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to make sure that the, that special permit, it really is a two-part. It's the special permit as well as the special event permit application in the hearing. So if you can make sure that that's included in the communication, in the advertisement. And my understanding is, we'll have that on the 10th? Great. If I could just provide some clarification on that particular issue, I will be sending to the city clerk information about proposed conditions that we would want to have attached to this permit, particularly to the special event aspect of the permit. We've had meetings with the police department, the fire department, the public health, public services, and the country club themselves, to try to ensure that no aspect of this tournament results in additional costs to the city, that the country club and the USGA become the responsible parties for the cost. And the conditions are going to be spelled out in that way, so that they have to abide by the requirements of each of the departments to ensure that the public safety of the citizenry at large and the adjoining neighborhoods is protected. So that'll be being sent out with your packet, and I would certainly, when you receive that, if you have additional items that you see or something that you think we've missed, will take any kind of input that you want to give us, because I think it's really important we put a tight jacket around this whole thing to make sure the city doesn't get stuck with the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gravell, and I'm just going to, not to be redundant, but I am going to be redundant for just a moment, because we haven't done this much before. There are, in this late receipt, there's actually two different items, so I want you to be cognizant of that, that, and there's actually two different approvals. There's the special permit approval, and then there is the special event application. So I just want you to be aware of two, there's actually two related but unique items in this, in this late receipt, and they'll be, and we will take both of those actions. And as Counsel Gravell said, all the additional information will be circulated prior to the meeting. Thank you for that, Counsel Gravell. Anything further? Counsel Garabedian.
No motions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Garabedian. Counsel Gould.
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to make a co-motion with Counsel Charis to please have the police department advise us on whether there is a need for a stop sign at the intersection of Perkins and Franklin. There's been a couple of accidents there lately, and I had two people call and ask, two people that are in accidents call and ask if we could, see if we can help with that. I don't know if you have any feedback on that, Counsel Charis, but I'd like a police recommendation on that, please.
On the motion, Counsel Charis.
Yes, thank you. A while back, I made a co-motion with Peter, Counsel McGinn, on exactly that intersection. I am still waiting to hear back, but, hey, it's making a second motion for information is great with me, you know?
I think a motion for a status on the original motion would be the right.
So moved. Thank you.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counsel Gould. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Also, Counsel Gould? Thank you, Counsel Gould. Moving on. Item 8B. Counsel Walsh, can I get a motion to receive?
Motion to receive, Mr. President.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Item 8C. Counsel Masoulis, can I get a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Item 8D. Counsel Sassla, can I get a motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order?
Motion to receive item 8D, all and approve, all papers being in order.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Item 8E. Counsel Gould, can I get a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Item 9A. Counsel Garabedian, can I get a motion to receive and approve, all papers being in order?
Motion to receive, with all papers being in order.
Counselors, you heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.